Okay, we have an quorum here and like to welcome everybody to the May 12th, 2020 regular meeting of the Bland County School Board. Uh, this is a live meeting and uh, we'll, we have some comments that have been sent in which we'll read at a later time. Um, and we'd like to thank the people that are putting this on for us. There's been a lot of work done in preparation of this. And uh, we hope to do a better job each and every month. So this is kind of our uh, test case and hope it comes out well and uh, hope it's of value to those of you out there that are, are watching the meeting. Uh, with that, uh, I'd like to start with invocation, Mr. Buttre, if you would do that.
Lord, we thank you for this opportunity. We have to come together and conduct the business of our schools. Lord, for the betterment of our children and our community. Lord, we pray for them this afternoon. God, those that are uh, serving as well as our children and their families, God, our educators and staff of our school system. God, Lord, that you would have your hand upon them. Lord, now give us the wisdom and your power, God, to make the right decisions and God tonight to touch each and every one of these in our community of Bland County. And we give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes. We have the minutes of four meetings. Uh, we can either do them as a group or individually. How would you like to proceed?
Group.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have any modifications to the minutes?
I don't have any.
I don't.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the four meeting.
Second.
Mr. Bailey.
Four.
Mr. Buttre.
Four.
Ms. Bucket.
Four. Mr. Shepherds.
Four. Uh, next, under informational agenda, we have attendance. Uh, I think as everybody knows, um, uh, a lot of our funding comes in based upon the attendance of the school. Uh, we ended March, uh, officially at six hundred and seventy-six, um, which is down thirty-nine students from this same time last year.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this tape reports that from March ADM reports was six hundred and seventy-eight point sixty.
Okay, that is the official number that we actually get our, our check from.
Yes.
Um, we have eleven uh, registered in pre-K and we have twenty-three students that reside out of Bland County. Uh, next item are financial reports. Uh, the information this year uh, is changing almost on a daily basis. Uh, some of our income is based upon sales tax and of course, uh, uh, with everything shut down, sales tax has dropped. Uh, also a lot on lottery funds, uh, lottery sales have gone down tremendously. Uh, so we're seeing a loss of uh, certain revenues. Uh, we did get uh, money from the National Forest. Uh, uh, remember what that exact payment was?
Seventy thousand dollars.
Seven, okay. Which was not budgeted, but that actually makes up for a very similar amount that we were sharted in our budget because of lack of enrollment. So, uh, we're looking at this on a daily basis. Of course, uh, some areas were not spending as much as in the budget, especially in areas such as transportation. So we're working to uh, watch this on a daily basis and I'll actually uh, say a little more uh, about this as we get into uh, the item on next year's budget because things are changing rapidly for next year also.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Rapid and uh, Mrs. Tate developed an online uh, registration for kindergarten. And the last time I talked to her, uh, they've only had it up for like three weeks, I think. They have thirty-nine students.
Amen.
That's great.
Okay, hopefully that's a underestimate of what we're going to actually have. Lenore, do we do public comment now or do we wait to a specific time? Well, I commented some on that. That's pretty much it. Okay, uh, public comment, uh, you might want to state how people could send these comments in, Lenore.
Uh, comments can be emailed to lparker@bland.k12.v a.us.
And go ahead and tell them what, how, what needs to be included or what?
Uh, you would need to include your name. Uh, comments can't be made anonymously and uh, comments have to be under three minutes.
And it becomes public record?
And it does become public record.
Yeah, they do become public records. So, okay, uh, one that we've received, uh, Mr. Mead and board members, my name is Winifred Pogasong. And I've been employed as a custodian for Bland County Schools for fifteen years. I understand that this evening there is to be a discussion about contracting out custodial services at the schools. If you find that this is a cheaper option, I would like for you to think about the people who already have working here. I have faithfully cleaned the building at Bland, moved furniture around every summer, wax floors, and helped teachers move during a consolidation. I've done this and more than is required of my job because of the strong bonds I have developed with the administration and teachers, and especially with the students of the school. If an outside company were to take over the custodial work, I could possibly be rehired because of my thorough knowledge of the school, but I would lose many of the benefits I have now. As an employee of the county school system, I enrolled in the school's insurance and pay into VRS for my retirement. I would lose these. One shift of the job posted would cut the custodial hours to part-time position of thirty hours a week and would not permit me to carry their insurance. Please keep all these things in mind when making your decision. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Winifred Pogasong. We will be discussing uh, the projects that have been put out for bid at a later time in the meeting, which will address this issue. Anybody else have anything they want to say at this time? Uh, okay. Okay.
Is that the only public comment?
That is the only public comment. At this time, I ask uh, Mr. Mead Superintendent to give an update to the board.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, basically, I've uh, talked to both principals and uh, similarities are they're so proud of their staff, uh, the teachers that work very hard with the virtual uh, learning. Uh, they've used Dojo, they've used um, all the different uh, virtual classes that uh, uh, corresponds with our Chromebooks. Um, they're, the only thing they talk negatively about was the packets. They don't feel like that the kids are getting the same as they would with the Zoom presentation or uh, Chromebooks or something like that. They don't feel like this, they're, they're seeing the teacher. So they wanted to bring that up. Um, they're also very proud of their staff there, the office staff. Uh, they've been working hard. Um, I'm proud of the teachers that's come in and prepared these packets and do all the things they do. As we all know, this started on March thirteenth and uh, that and next Monday, we were already putting things in place. So take our hats off to our teachers and our staff. The cafeterias, uh, I can't begin to tell you how rewarding it's been uh, delivering meals to our students. Uh, I, I helped on a route that's, uh, we deliver meals to forty-six different students. Ms. Sarver would like me to read you an update on school attrition. And she said, May first was National School Cafeteria Lunch Hero Day. Kelly recognized the staff by providing them lunch. We want to know how much they are appreciated every day, but more than anything, what true heroes they have been during the school closure. Thank you for all your dedication to the kids. The elementary staff Nancy Brown, Shale Grossclose, Shelley Atwell, the high school staff Tammy Gibson, Tricia Lundy, and Melissa Weber. These ladies have packed a combined total of thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty meals since March eighteenth. We are currently feeding two hundred and five children under the age of eighteen in Bland County as of May eleventh. Kelly also like to thank the delivery staff and uh, that delivers the food on Mondays and Wednesdays each week. Those folks are myself, Mike Shelton, Kevin Polly, Anthony Sanders, Crystal Sanders, school resource officer Buck Dally, school resource officer Jerry Turpin, and the Bland County Sheriff's Department. Uh, at the end of this month, uh, all students that are receiving free reduced lunch will be issued an EBT benefit. Um, so that's going to help out if we have to stop doing what we're doing now. So they'll be getting some, some funds for uh, for food and stuff.
Could you explain a little bit how that works?
I'll read it to you. We also wanted to announce on Friday, May eighth, the Bland County Public Schools participating in pandemic electronic benefit transfer P dash EBT program as part of a food assistance plan approved by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the USDA. Food nutrition services that is being implemented statewide by Virginia Department of Social Services and the Virginia Department of Education. The VDSA SS will issue the EBT benefits to current supplemental nutritional assistance program households and to non-Snap households, which include children eligible for free and reduced priced school meals through the Virginia SNAP card system. The VDSA SS is in conjunction with the VDOE and local school divisions will identify eligible children in both SNAP and non-Snap households. If a student was eligible to receive free and reduced uh, price meals at school before the school closure, the student will include in the file of eligible students provided by the VDSA SS. This distribution of these funds should begin late May or early June. Um, and she went on to say that we've had uh, another donation from a resident in Bland County to help feed our children. And um, she said, Bland County High School, um, is uh, two thousand two hundred and one food orders per month and Bland County Elementary School, four thousand four hundred and fifty food orders per month.
And that said, it would start in late May or early June.
Yeah, it starts, they, they, they issue them to the Department of Social Services. And then the Department of Social Services works with the school division to make sure that they reach the kids.
Do we have a need to extend our meals longer than the end of the school?
Well, I would, I'll talk to Kelly about that. I think the state would like us to continue that, but you gotta have the funding, you gotta have the people to do it. And uh, we've been talking about it on this day to see how we could do it if possible. So I'll continue the talks with Kelly, but I don't think right now we're in a position to do it through summer. But I'm not saying we won't, I'm just saying right now.
I, I was thinking more, you know, if it's a two-week lag between they go from one program to the other.
If we just did pick up the two weeks.
Something there.
What would that cost be?
Uh, I couldn't tell you that right now, but uh, that's very possible.
At that time, there probably would be a, a reason to supplement pay because people would.
Right, be coming in and wouldn't be people.
Right. See, see if you can look at that Scott and see if, I'd hate for there to be a lag between programs.
Well, I would too, because I've come, come pretty close with my kids. They call me the food guy. Here comes the food guy.
That's great. And I, and I have a donation from someone from church that it's in our back pocket if we need it that we can use. So and I've talked to Scott about that.
Yeah, I think if we beat some bushes, we could get some money.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Shepherd has talked about this with me earlier today, but uh, we're getting ready to move into an era of what they call the new normal in education, which I don't know if it's normal for everyone, but uh, it's what it's called. And what the state has put together is a task force to work in different areas of what we do when we reopen schools. And further on here, we'll talk about that, but we need to do that locally too, I think. And I, I'll give you an example of some of the things the state is looking at, you know, kind of uh, open your eyes to what we're going to have to look at as well. Um, there's uh, the key topics that they're considering is, is technology needs, devices, uh, access to internet. We, we don't have that. We have some places that don't even have cell service.
Right.
So uh, student, student needs is the next topic. School attrition, uh, physical and mental health, uh, social emotional supports and instructional supports. The next topic was staff needs, uh, professional development, distance learning uh, practice. Not all our teachers are, are comfortable with that. We need to give them some professional development. And the way this fell out, we didn't have time to do it.
Right, yeah.
So we need to back up and do some of that. And also staff needs, retention issues. I think I, I would add attendance issues, how are we going to handle that? Uh, health and safety considerations. Um, next topic was social distancing while in school buildings. Just use your imagination of how we're going to do that. Uh, you know, is, is it something we have to look at schedules, uh, how we access the buildings? Different access for vulnerable students, uh, ELL, special, special needs kids. Um, and the next thing is of course, financial implications. Uh, we, we talked about that. There's going to be some hidden costs to all of this. Um, then student transportation, uh, that's, that's the next topic. Uh, all these topics, we have a lot of questions. And then the last one was family engagement and communication, um, especially with our families not all having internet access.
Right.
Access. Um, the governor will open up in phases as we, if you, you've read that, I don't have to say that again. It's phase one, phase two, and phase three. So our task force has to be ready for different scenarios, I would think, under each phase. Because when they open up, it's going to affect the way we do things. And if you get to phase three, I don't think there would be a lot of thought how we're going to handle that. So I think my recommendation to you guys is we start to develop these task forces. Our local, LEA, develop, develop some task force themselves. Now, their, the state's going to come out with their recommendations, I think, in about a couple of weeks. So we'll have something to look at, but one size doesn't fit all in Virginia. And what we do may be totally different than what they do in the north of, of East Coast. Keep that in mind, but that's what we might start working all the summer, quickly, the better. Um, on Tuesday, we will have a webinar uh, with uh, Mr. Stamp in Bass, and it's going to be uh, a budget and finance webinar. I'm looking forward to it because you're going to be talking about, I think there are certain scenarios too, what we're going to do. They'll know then what our lottery funds look like. Uh, and as we get into June, we're going to know what our sales tax money looks like. So there's going to be a lot of good information. Once I get there, I'll shoot you guys an email with some summaries on that. Um, I think I've, I've hit just about everything, uh, I was going to talk about today, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, school board, uh, Mr. Buttre, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I just want to say, um, we really appreciate the hard work of all our teachers and um, just to kind of echo what Mr. Mead has already said, the sheriff's office as well as we have got some really great staff and volunteers that have been delivering meals. Um, and our teachers that are been, have been really flexible in their instruction. Um, I did want to put out that I know that we had talked about insurance, um, for the coming year. Um, and I would like to talk about maybe starting in our July, maybe August, about uh, putting together a team uh, with Ms. Walters to uh, look at our insurance, uh, uh, health insurance to uh, go out once we have our set roster of next year's um, personnel. That's all I had.
Yeah, I think that's been agreed upon. It's just uh,
Wait.
The timing is, is, just whenever you feel the timing is correct. Yes. Okay, Ms. Bucket?
Again, like always, we're very blessed to have all the people that we do have that are so hard workers and we appreciate every one of them.
Uh, same here. Yeah, same here. Just uh, appreciate all the teachers and all the, the sheriff's department, all those, the county and everybody that's been helping this time and for the school board office and all the time that they spend. And Mr. Mead, we really appreciate you getting out there with the kids and getting some names and some faces and seeing the parents and stuff.
Yes.
Appreciate that, yeah.
I've actually enjoyed.
Yeah.
I know all the first name and I've always, I've had a few nicknames with you.
I can give them, I'll give them a call myself. But we really, really appreciate every, the teachers, that uh, all the work that they're doing from home and, and uh, especially the ones that are having to teach with our own kids and teach other kids at the same time. So I know it's a lot of stress and, but we appreciate all the work they're doing.
Okay, uh, we're in times that are unprecedented for all of us and uh, uh, we would have liked to have finished the school year as planned. We would have loved to have the, I'll say the normal graduation, which is highly regarded. We'd love to have had a prom. Uh, so many people work so hard in uh, theater and sports and uh, other activities and they were looking to really uh, make us proud and none of it happened. And I really feel that this is going to change the entire school environment, uh, possibly forever, but definitely for the next couple of years. And to me, there, there's a word I'm going to throw out and it, the word is serve. And we're going to have to focus on serving students of Bland County. We're going to have to focus on s- serving the parents of the students. We're going to, serving our staff, all of those things because life is going to be much different. And uh, uh, we've, we've been forced into it for the remainder of this year. Uh, people have stepped up, done a great job. Uh, it's been painful at times. Uh, we actually got a call from a uh, parent whose uh, uh, son is going away to college and said they thought it was the best thing ever happened with the way it was handled because they thought it was preparing him to uh, work on his own and be successful and responsible. Uh, so there are some good things and we've got to focus at times on, on the good things, but we, we've lost a lot and uh, our students have lost a lot. So uh, we're, we're going to be, as the meeting goes on, talking about things that we need to address. Uh, because uh, we want parents to be comfortable when their children come back to school. Uh, and because uh, especially in the younger grades, uh, you don't have social distancing in kindergarten and first grade and second grade. They're like a group of ducks. They tend to huddle together. Uh, so we've got a lot of things to address and uh, not much time to do it in. We, we hope that the next school year uh, starts on time and starts in somewhat a reasonable manner. Uh, when some of this stuff happened, Mr. Mead and I talked and he said, what do you think? And I said, I'll be happy if we can go back next year and everything is, is good. Uh, but as you see, things are dragging on. We still have a lot of cases. Uh, while some things are opening up, uh, people are very scared that as they open up, uh, there's going to be a resurgence. And so we've got to be very careful with things. So, uh, like I say, I'd like to go back to this word serve. We're going to do everything we can to try and serve the students of Bland County and make the school system successful. Uh, with that, we'll move into the action agenda. Uh, first item is to approve the payments for the month. Anybody have any comments or questions on any of the payments?
I move to approve.
I'll second. Mr. Buttre.
Four.
Ms. Bucket. Four. Mr. Bailey.
Four.
Mr. Shepherds.
Four. Uh, item B of the action agenda is updates on the Virginia School Board Association policies. Uh, these policies were gone through by Lenore and uh, all changes marked, our additions, subtractions. You did a marvelous job.
Yep.
Marvelous.
Marvelous. Wonderful.
Send it out to all of us to review. Hopefully we did as marvelous a job review. Uh, and uh, so we need to approve these policies unless somebody has a concern about one of them.
If there's, if there's any changes, I know there's some changes on the access for the social media, um, of teachers and, or employees, I guess, it, it only involves if there's an investigation and stuff. But I guess if there's any changes that's significant, we're going to point it out to the teachers and the employees and stuff, okay?
These will be uploaded to the website probably.
Yeah.
Early tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, cool.
And I think uh, our overall goal too is to start doing a better job with the teacher handbook.
Right.
To add some of the things you're talking about, the changes.
Right. Just kind of to point out, just highlight this stuff. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of changes in there that's like, my, they doesn't really evolve a whole lot, but there's some things in there, you know, and when they're talking about the evaluations.
Right.
Um, they're actually, you know, for strength with, uh, weak, weaknesses and recommendations. I mean, for the, for the principals and those people that do evaluations, I think there really needs to be pushed to them, let them know that that's what we're going to be looking for. So.
It's not just seniority.
You're right, yeah.
Yeah, let's focus on seniority in the new uh, regulations.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Okay, we need to.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the, the new VSPA policies.
I'll second. Mr. Bailey.
Four.
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 Mr. Shepherds.
Four. Uh, item C is a uh, a draft of a driver's education policy. I guess in my mind, I have a question. Who are the people outside of our school system that we are trying to serve with this? Because this policy allows for people outside of our school system to use our driver's ed.
We have some kids who are outside our school system that reside in Bland County that go to a private Christian, um, school where they do not offer a driver's ed program. So that's kind of where we're looking at here, is to try to cover them.
Yeah, and I think we should, well, you know, I think we need to focus, make sure that we have the people in place to, to serve our students and then if there's time available to serve them, but to focus to make sure our, our, our kids are being taken care of first and I don't know.
Yeah, this kind of goes back to the, what's termed Tim Tebow laws.
Yeah.
Uh, where it was, uh, should people that are not a part of your enrollment be allowed to take part in ex, well, extracurricular activities? In other words, uh, uh, you know, you have costs to do these things. Uh, if they're part of your enrollment, you get funding from the state and federal government. Uh, if they're not part of your enrolling, enrollment, you get nothing.
Right.
So should they get the same benefits as the people that are enrolled? Uh, and uh, I guess that's what also comes to mind in this because uh, I, I see as times go forward, we're going to have more and more online teaching. And uh, uh, that's great. And, and I think, uh, I think we'll really learn the value of, of a lot of that. But there are things that a person gets by being part of the organization here, social things. Uh, you know, interactions, s- sports, uh, theater, uh, music, uh, so many things. Uh, proms, uh, you know, graduations, things that stick with you throughout your life uh, that you don't get if you do home enrollment. And so I think we're going to be going towards a hybrid as we move forward. And the question is, uh, do we provide people that aren't part of our enrollment to take part in those activities? I, I just, I kind of see this as the tip of the iceberg and I want to make sure that we're not setting a precedent that we're going to look back on and say, I'm not sure we should have done that. Uh, any comments on that?
I mean, as far as going forward now, I mean, as long as we're covering our costs right now on, on the driver's education, I mean, it's providing a service for our kids, but also the kids that's, again, that in the, in the county that may not go here. I, I mean, personally, right now, I don't have a problem with it, uh, as long as we're covering our costs.
As long as we have enough folks that are able to serve our students.
Right.
Which I know we got an email earlier today saying, I believe all of them behind the wheel was complete as of yet.
No, I don't remember seeing that.
Maybe, maybe not.
I do know we just had one instructor.
Yeah. Is that uh?
Mr. Wright.
Mr. Wright, okay, yeah. Yeah, because I had talked to him at the beginning of the year and he told me he had all that he wanted, you know, with that, so. We need to probably look at somebody, if we can get someone else that, that would be interested in it, so. Uh, so if we're going to do it, I guess we need a motion to accept the policy. I'll make a motion to accept the, the policy.
I'll second.
Mr. Bailey.
Four.
Mr. Buttre.
Four.
Ms. Bucket. Four. Mr. Shepherds.
I'm going to vote against this. Okay. Next item on the agenda is O and M projects. On O and M projects, the only modification for the month was a five thousand dollar payment uh, for the removal of the trees at the uh, elementary school. Uh, my understanding is the roof units are in process and that the roof on the uh, uh, concession stand at the football field is in process. and that the roof on the, uh, uh, concession stand at the football field is in process.
How long will that take, do you think, do you think?
He thought he would, would the concession, he thought he'd finish it this week.
Okay, cool.
He had three, four guys working, so.
Okay, yeah. Did they get the door lock installed on the, for the concession? Wasn't it, uh, what we purchased?
The key pad.
Key pad.
Yes, I think they got the key pad on.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
And we want to kind of control who has that and, and it is changing, so.
Okay, uh, item E of the action agenda. Uh, we, we term these when we put together our agenda committees, but, uh, the term that was used by the state today was task force. So we probably should go with their terminology. Uh, but, uh, again, in trying to, uh, get direction as to what the board needs to do, uh, from a manpower standpoint and a spending standpoint, uh, w- we need to put together some task forces to address things. And the first one, uh, we asked to be put together was for student health and school sanitation. Uh, I think, and Mr. Mead, you can comment on this. There was, uh, definitely talking about taking temperature on students, uh, and they even suggested that this be taken as they enter the bus, if that's possible. So, uh, I guess we need to talk about how we put together these task forces and how we choose the people. And we need them to start reporting to the board, uh, giving us a report, I should say.
We need to proceed with the folks that we need to be on each of these committees. We need a good representation. And I really think too that when these phases start to come into effect, we'll have to work directly with health department. So we're looking at, uh, working with them as well, especially in this health and school sanitation part.
So you like on the, this one, you're looking at probably someone like a nurse to be on the committee?
Absolutely.
Uh, maybe, uh, if it's the bus drivers are involved, I think there should be a bus driver. I think somebody on the school board, um, somebody.
Yeah, I think there should be a school board.
And, and then somebody as far as, uh, in the ad, administration side of it, of one of the principals or assistant principal or.
Well, um, and I really think we, we, uh, should seek out, uh, Mr. Senek too, from the health department.
Him or Ms., uh, I don't know, first name's Brandy. She's our, our nurse from the health department as well, so him, her, or Mr. Senek.
I think Mr. Eastep would be good because he can handle both the sports side and the, you know, uh, assistant principal side. Uh, and then, uh, uh, probably Kathy Bunsey from a nursing standpoint.
Which, which the bus drivers.
Redona will probably be a good one. Redona, I mean, any of them would be good. She's what pops in the eyes.
Cause Sandy's still on the, she's not on the subway.
Yeah.
Cause she was a nurse, that's all.
You want somebody that's full-time driver. Yeah, that's fine.
I'll make contact with her to see if she would serve. I'll use a backup, uh, in case she doesn't wanna do it. But I think she will.
We need a board member.
Which one you guys want?
I mean, I can, I'll, I can do it if you want to, it's, uh.
I think with your background, that would be good.
You really don't know my background?
Yeah, I know.
We need volunteers in three days.
Whoa, how this, how this happens? Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, the, uh, next task force we're talking about, um, uh, item F of the action agenda is, was termed school action committee. And this kind of touches on things that, uh, Scott did. And then I'm not sure that one task force could do this. I, I think they're going to have to, uh, have some subcommittees or something because, uh, uh, you know, technology is definitely an area that's gotta be addressed. Because, uh, if we're doing much more online learning, uh, where do, where does the student sit? Uh, do we have the hardware? Do we have the software? Do we have the, the bandwidth and the wifi? Uh, where does the teacher interface? I mean, do we do the, uh, uh, I would say the Khan Academy type approach where they do their learning online and then they work with the, uh, the teacher to do their homework and their testing? Uh, all of these things need to be, uh, a- addressed from a technology standpoint. And then, uh.
And the beauty about us is we have the people, we have our own system that provides professional development we're talking about. We have some really, really good folks in that area, so. And I'd like to see some of them on this committee, that, I say them, teachers, um.
So I, I'd, I'd like to go ahead and, and try and name some people for a technology group, um.
Well, you got two standing back here.
Hey! Okay.
One step forward.
We appreciate you guys for all the, for the assistance in this, this, this reported and Mountain Home Center people and everything. Appreciate you guys, giving you, giving your time, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I would like to add on to, I think the two of them should be on the committee. From the elementary school, um, Ms. Blessing, I would like to suggest that she be on the committee. Um, I actually had a person say, if you make this committee, I would like to be on it, uh, which is Mr. Dotson. And I guess we need a, a board member for this committee.
You wanna get another elementary teacher?
I'm stepping back now.
You learned.
I've learned this time.
I will, if you, if, and if, uh.
That, that would be good.
So.
Well, I, I think that as part of this, we also need, uh, and I'll throw this together, but a student and staff need, we need to put a committee on that. And, um, one of the things.
You're done with the technology.
Technology, I, I think so.
Now you moved into student and staff.
Needs. Um, I, I'm really concerned, uh, as this thing goes on, I'll say from a, uh, a food standpoint. We, we have, we have seen tremendous need as this food's been delivered. Uh, and so many of these kids, uh, come to school hungry. And, uh, I, I know there's programs that are supposed to sort out which ones they think are gonna come hungry and those that don't. But at least early in the morning, I would like to see everybody have something to eat. And I don't know what the feasibility is. You know, sometimes you try and do the right thing and it, uh, avoids a government program which costs you even more.
Yeah.
Uh, so we've got to research this, but I would like for Kelly to be part of this, this committee.
She already told me today she wanted to be part of this.
Cool, good.
I think, uh, I would, Laura hasn't been put on the committee yet, has she?
Yeah.
I would recommend Laura.
I like Laura. One of the, one of the people I forgot about in the technology backup, just one minute is Josh Schneid. Josh Schneid's really good.
Okay.
And if we could add him, that'd be two for elementary, two for secondary.
Okay.
I assume would Ms. Tate be a part of that as well, automatically for the technology?
Yeah. Yeah.
Student staff needs, you got Laura, you got Kelly. Um, what about, uh, some teachers that use this, um, Google Classroom and, uh, that's used the Marshall Virginia and those type of things? Could we, could we get a couple of them to serve with this too? As you say, student and staff needs, well, all of us can be some disruption or would you rather do another committee for disruption?
No, I think, I think that goes with these, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't think we wanna, as few people as we have, I don't think we wanna spread ourselves too thin, so. So who would you suggest for that?
I tell you what, uh, it's like, I think I told you guys, I went to Hannah's, Hannah's house that we're doing. And, uh, she's carrying around a little silhouette, Miss Lambert.
Everybody's carrying Miss Lambert around.
She's everywhere.
I'm taking my break and Miss Lambert and I would blow a bug. So, I, she impresses me in some of the things she does, I might see who.
That sounds great.
And then a high school person, maybe Carol, like would be good.
Let's check with them and see if they have the time and stuff, so.
And I mean, th- this has to dovetail with the phases that the state is, you know, and so, uh, I think Scott, in some ways, you're, you get to be a part of all this.
Yeah, and I, I would want to. Uh, and I, I read to you the, the different areas that the state's looking at. So I, I think we'll probably have to do a little piggyback on them, so. This would be a great start.
You have a board member for that one?
I do not.
We don't yet. Sharon, would you be willing?
That's why I looked at you.
No.
Okay, is that good? And like I said, they, they need to coordinate with you, Mr. Mead, and, and what's, what's going on with the state. But we've got to have a plan. Like I say, it was brought up earlier, you know, what should we be ordering? Should we be ordering masks and should we be ordering thermometers? Which, uh, we need these people to look at it and say, this is what we're gonna need to be successful. Uh, uh, and I think that's the, the best way we can do it.
And what I, uh, see happening here too is maybe, uh, some subcommittees are formed out of these three committees. So it might be a little bit too much to put just three committees for all those areas I alluded to earlier.
Right. Well, I mean, we'll listen to the recommendations and it doesn't have to wait until the next meeting for them to give us a recommendation. Okay, uh, the next item, item G is a special education annual plan. Everything looks solid to me. Anybody have any comments on that?
Just, uh, the only comment I have is, uh, all, all of us have worked really hard in the last year so bringing in Beth Coffin to help with the special needs program has been very beneficial.
Do you need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the special education annual plan.
I'll second. Mr. Bailey?
Four.
Ms. Pickett, four.
Four.
I cannot, I cannot get this thing to stay connected to the internet. It keeps booting me off.
Booting you off. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is open bids. Uh, there were bids, uh, requested on five items. Uh, uh, roof on, the shingled roof on building B, uh, snow removal, lawn care, general maintenance and custodial. And, uh, with this, uh, as we've talked about many times, uh, uh, the funding for the school keeps going down every year. And, uh, of course, the facilities stay the same. So, uh, how do we, uh, properly pay our teachers, keep them competitive and meet the needs? So what we were looking at to say, okay, uh, are there opportunities out there? Uh, building B roof, which is, uh, uh, very much in need of repair. We have two bids on that, um, one at thirty-nine, six ninety and one at forty-eight, seven eighty-nine. Uh, of course, we would like to go with the one, the lower bid. There are a couple of caveats in that proposal that we have to go back and make sure, uh, and guarantee for one, that it is a firm proposal and there's not gonna be, uh, you know, we found bad cheating or we did this and they did that and we're gonna up the price. Uh, with that, um, I, I would like to ask for a motion that we go ahead with this. And we will go with the lower bid if it is a, uh, functional bid. And if not, we need to go ahead with the higher bid. So we could have a motion to move forward with this.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the roof.
I'll second.
Mr. Braden?
Four.
Mr. Bailey?
Four.
Four. Mr. Shepherds?
Four.
Okay, uh, on the other bids, uh, we only got one bid for snow removal. We've got, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven bids for lawn care, uh, two bids for general maintenance and two bids for custodial. Uh, with these, uh, the bids did not fall in line of what we needed to be able to move forward. So at this point in time, we will not be moving forward with any of these bids. Okay, any thing else on open bids? Next item, item I is the purchase of a bus. We try whenever possible to upgrade our fleet. Buses are very expensive. Uh, the current price through, I guess this is a state contract, is, is ninety-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. That with the chrome wheels.
Dual exhaust.
But, uh, with the, the fact that, uh, school has been closed, uh, and, uh, we have not been running buses, uh, we have, uh, right now estimated a little over a hundred thousand dollar surplus in our transportation budget. And, uh, since next year looks very risky for us from a financial standpoint, I would like to recommend we take that, uh, money, which, uh, is going to be available this year and purchase a bus. Uh, do I have a motion to move ahead on that?
I'll make the motion, purchase the bus.
I'll second. Mr. Braden?
Four.
Ms. Pickett, four. Mr. Bailey?
Four.
Mr. Shepherds?
Four. Next item is surplusing some of the buses that, uh, are no longer in our fleet. Uh, a couple of things are going on there. One is, uh, uh, Mr. Shelton is, is meeting with Merritt, Sonny Merriman, the bus company, to see if, uh, they know of any, uh, potential buyers or even somebody that would want it to park the bus out. Uh, and also he's looking to see whether we have any buses that we are not actively using that they would be willing to take as a trade-in on the current bus. Uh, other than that, uh, with things locked down the way they are, it's about impossible to surplus something.
Right.
At the moment. So other than those actions, my recommendation is that we table this and, uh, and wait till hopefully things open up for us. Okay, next item is the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget. Uh, we were notified from the state that they will be reducing our state funding by a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from what they had told us when we put the budget together. Uh, however, the federal government is, has a CARES program and we were told that we will get a hundred and eighteen thousand, six forty-seven in the CARES program. Now, the problem with these type of things is the CARES program has certain requirements and sometimes it's not apples and apples when you lose money and gain money. Uh, but we think, uh, we probably have enough flexibility to work things out. That gives us an immediate loss for next year's budget of thirty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, like I said, I think there'll be some savings from this year. And if, uh, Ms. Dr. Workman and the board of supervisors, uh, works with us on this, we'll try our best to have at least that much rollover, uh, so that we can have a full budget for next year. Uh, we do expect other impacts on the budget from sales tax and lottery and other things as, as the various government agencies, uh, see their, uh, their monies decreasing. The other thing is on both this year and next year, uh, we have a lot of things which are called flow-through accounts, uh, where we get money if we do certain services. Right now, we're not doing those services, so we're not getting the money. But if the timing doesn't mess us up. But if the timing doesn't mess us up, that's a dollar for dollar offset. So while it may reduce the amount of money we're spending and we're getting and make our budget look like it, you know, isn't exactly what we wrote down. It shouldn't impact us from a profit-loss standpoint. So with that, and the Board of Supervisors last night approved our budget, we thank them for it.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
And we want to thank them very much because we know the burden on the county was greater this year than it was last year. And that's part of our problem with enrollment. So like I said, thank you very much for approving our budget as it was requested.
Did you see the letter?
Yes, yes.
The last paragraph was really nice. Doc Workman's work, work really good, so appreciate it.
As far as a meeting to do anything on next year's budget, we really don't have any actions that need to be taken at this place. So unless you have an objection, I suggest we can table that.
Yeah.
Public hearing. Again, the budget was reviewed by the Board of Supervisors and approved, so I think we can table that item.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how we could have one currently, so if we wanted one, so I don't think we have a need to.
Well, the, the Board of Supervisors has had one. Hers is part of that.
Hers is part of that, right. Okay, and the last item on the action agenda is personnel recommendations. So, Mr. Mead?
Yes, we interviewed yesterday for the Director of Special Services. We had some really good candidates, it was a hard decision, but at this time, I'd like to recommend Laura Rafferty for that position.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bailey?
Four.
Mr. Patrick?
Four.
Ms. Pickett? Four. Mr. Shepherds?
Four. And with that, I think we have made it through our first broadcasted meeting.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Do you agree back there, the man behind the camera?
We got a thumbs up.
A thumbs up, that's as good as it gets at the moment. So need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Mr. Patrick?
Four.
Mr. Bailey?
Four.
Four. Mr. Shepherds?
Four. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.